Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the August 3rd, 2023 Kenner Council Meeting to order. Like to ask Councilwoman McKenney to lead us in a prayer.
Yes. Please bow your heads.
Lord God, thank you for this day and the opportunity to come together to make impactful decisions for our community and to work together for the best of Kenner. On this day, please give us direction, fortitude, and grace to deal with anything that may lay ahead. May we seek your guidance and work steadfastly in your name. Amen.
Okay, ma'am. Like to ask State Senator Kirk Talbot to lead us in the pledge.
Let's make this good flag for the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, before I turn this over to the council clerk, going forward, especially while I'm chairman of the meetings, for privacy issues, I'm gonna ask people that come up to the podium to please just leave or state your name and the city you live in without an address, please. If you need to speak with or if a supervisor or department head needs to speak with you about the matter you come up to discuss, they will come to you after the meeting and get your address for reference. So please keep that in mind if you come to the podium. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. In accordance with Council Resolution Number B-14550, please be advised that all cellular telephones and other devices of this nature must be deactivated or silenced throughout the council meeting. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum this evening. Next up would be the correspondence, reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads.
Mayor Glazer?
Thank you. Got a couple of information I'd like to pass on to the council and the public. As I stated in a July 6th council meeting, I was attending the Jefferson Chamber of Commerce's inner-city visit in Austin, Texas. It was intriguing to me because when I looked at the itinerary, they redeveloped an old airport site into a master-planned community. They converted a shuttered shopping mall into a campus of Austin Community College, which I learned while I was there is equally as big as the University of Texas in student population. And they have 11 campuses. So it was nice, and they also have a large development in north part of Travis County called The Domain. It is a concept of live-work-play kind of shopping, outdoor shopping area, that I think the owners of the mall is kind of the concept they're leaning towards, to kind of have residential, you know, above the ground level shopping and restaurant-type stuff in open green space. But it's much larger than the S-18 mall site. What they are struggling with is, you know, touting them, they have more land expansion so they can attract businesses and tax incentives, that they're now taxing the common residents out of the county. Whereas five years ago, a residential home valued at $200,000 is now assessing at $800,000 to $900,000, and the residents can't pay the property taxes. So they sell and taking the profit and moving even further outside of Travis County and in the Austin area. Their biggest issue that I saw walking around is they have over 5,000 homeless people, that's their population, with only a little over 1,000 beds for them. So it's a large, I guess, undertaking trying to house these people. And they actually do have a ministry that had about $200 million in donations over the last 10 to 12 years, and they built a city of tiny homes that is the absolute cleanest place I've ever been. It's spotless, but it's maintained by the residents. So that was eye-opening. It would be a challenge to kind of duplicate some of their expansion and redevelopment because of the money they get in from the property taxes. Also, Tuesday, me and my staff attended the airport's Master Plan Community Advisory Committee meeting, where they presented the group with their 20-year development plan. I encouraged the residents to kind of keep your eye out. We'll promote it also when they start having the community meetings. It talks about what they plan on doing within the next 20 years. They're talking about the expansion or the increased capacity of the aircraft. When an aircraft lands, three years ago, 140-something people got off. Now, when an aircraft lands, 180-something people get off. And what it does is, the aircraft can still go to the terminal, but the restrooms, concessions, ticket counters are overwhelmed. So they look into expand more terminals. They don't have a definite plan yet what it will look like. They're talking about this rail system, having a hub south of Allen Highway, pretty much at west of their runway right-ofways, and bus service and light rail inside the airport grounds. So they're in a design process now, and I would encourage the council members and the citizens to pay attention to it because if you dump another north terminal, because they say within 15 years, they're gonna need twice the number of terminals they have now, and that'll overwhelm the city's sewer system, wastewater system, and all that stuff. So all that needs to be taken into account when we work with these guys and their redevelopment. Councilman Ronnie, we know Roosevelt is horrible. As we say, it's in the design phase. Jose says when you deal with state and federal monies, it's at a snail's pace. So we recognize that something is degrading and deteriorating faster than we're gonna repair it. So we gotta come up with some, I guess, quick fix while we're designing. And it'll be nice when it's finished, but we gotta get to the construction and finish part first. I'm happy to say that the dog park at City Park has three of the six new benches we purchased that are, they're installed. They don't have the concrete pads yet, but I was told within the next four weeks, we'll have the concrete pads a little better, more concrete access and moving in and around, and some shade for people that are sitting out with the dogs. And I would like to give, acknowledge State Representative Debbie Villia, who provided some of her funding to purchase these benches and do some of the upgrades. We'll let Senator Talbot talk about how well he treats the police department when he gives money away. And we have a ribbon cutting next Friday, or Councilman Dominic Empistado has a ribbon cutting at the Kenner Boat Launch. That it's, the repairs and remodel are complete. I do believe if you go out there today, it's open for business. So we're waiting for cycle construction to remove or their contractor to remove the temporary fencing around the area. But I think it was supposed to be done the end of yesterday, and I haven't made it out there today to see if the fencing's done. But we're happy to say that that boat launch should be up and running, you know, today as we speak. And with that, that's the only comments I have.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Do we have any resolutions, motions, or other items from the floor? Seeing none, under the consent agenda, we have Item 1, approval of minutes of regular council meeting of July 21st, 2023. Item 2 is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. Item 2A, at the request of the administration, they were requesting that this item be removed. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to remove Item 2A from the agenda. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 3 is approval of bingo and public gathering applications. Item 3A is application number 2334-23, New Orleans Air Coilers, to hold a public gathering on November 4th, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for the purpose of a charity car show at Lake Town. Item 3B is application number 2347-23, Vineyard Church of New Orleans, to hold a public gathering on September 30th, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. for the purpose of a fundraiser walk slash run at Lake Town. Item 3C is application number 2348-23, Jefferson Community Healthcare Centers, doing business as inclusive care, to hold a public gathering on August 19th, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for the purpose of a community back-to-school event at 2552 Williams Boulevard. Item 3D is application number 2349-23, Kenner Police Department, to hold a public gathering on October 14th, 2023, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for the purpose of a national night out kickoff party at the Ponchatrain Center parking lot. Item 3E is application number 2350-23, the City of Kenner, to hold a public gathering on October 28th, 2023, from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for the purpose of a Halloween event at Mosportolino. That will conclude the consent agenda. I have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember McKenney. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Under the public appearance agenda, we have Item 8, public hearings and final passage. Item 8A is a public hearing regarding summary ordinance number 13,322, and ordinance amending the capital budget for the fiscal year 2023/2024 according to ordinance number 12,241. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to open your public hearing. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. We're now in a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, to close your public hearing. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. I have a motion by Councilmember McKenney, seconded by Councilmember Brennan, for approval. Is there any council members wishing to discuss?
Councilwoman Wilmot?
Just for the record, have a brief explanation, please.
So if y'all remember, a couple months ago, y'all changed the ordinance that distributes the funding for our capital, for the council accounts. So this is, the budget was already presented at that point. So now that it's passed, we're just amending it based on that ordinance. So now it gets split between the five districts, and then at-large, A and B also get to share one-sixth of the allocation.
Thank you. Councilwoman McKenney?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I just want to thank the other council members for approving this previously, and I look forward to be able to help the residents with this funding. Thanks.
Madam Clerk?
Seeing no further discussion, council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 9 is ordinances for the sale, purchase, transfer, lease, and alienation of removable property. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. We have none. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the City of Kenner, State of Louisiana, the city, for authority to levy and collect an ad valorem tax not to exceed 18 and 20 hundredths mills on all properties subject to taxation in the city for a period of 10 years, beginning with the year 2024 and ending in the year 2033. Inclusive, in lieu of the not to exceed seven and forty hundredths mills, approved at an election held on April 24th, 2021, for the purpose of paying salaries and benefits of fire department personnel for constructing, improving, equipping, maintaining, and/or operating fire department buildings and facilities, and for acquiring, maintaining, and operating fire department vehicles and equipment, and further authorizing the submission of an application to the Louisiana State Bond Commission and other governmental agencies in connection with the proposed election, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Branigan.
Mr. Morella?
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 50th District, 51 years. I support this resolution. I always support when the people have a say in what's going on down here. But I can tell you this, I will not support it at the polls, and I'm gonna tell you why. It's the system that we have in place that failed our fire, that failed our fire department. And now y'all asking the property tax, the property owners in this city to bail this out. The system, at the way the fire chief is installed in this city, in the 51 years I've been living in this city, it has not worked, it's been a total failure. It's been strictly politics, it's been relatives, it's been conflicts of interest, it's strictly been political, and the firemen have suffered from this. If this position was elected by the electorate, the same electorate that you guys have got to answer to in this administration, they would have what they need. Their pay should be right the same as the Kenner Police Department. And at the very least comparable, but it's not, there's a big disparity. Why? Because the chief, y'all have to answer to the same people the police chief has to answer to. But the only person that the fire chief has to answer to is the administration. That budget for that department has always been what the council said it is. They've never got what they needed. It's always been underfunded. But at this time, Councilman Brennan, if this is in order on this, I would like to pose a question to the fire chief. If that's in order at this time. If not, I can wait till the end of the meeting. It doesn't matter.
I would ask that you do that.
That's no problem. Okay, anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taff, if you would, just please state your name and the city you live in, which we know, but just, thank you.
Greg Taff, live in Kenner, 5th District. I'm gonna support this millage. But I would like to see some guarantees put into it as well. One of the guarantees I want to make sure is that the administration in the future cannot move those funds or use those funds for anything other than the fire department. Because over the years, I've seen us play games. And right now, we've got people's lives here, and we're doing this because we want to keep our fire department, because it is essential. So we must make sure that it's in there that this millage will go directly for the fire department only. The other thing that I'd like to see is that it does not have, as far as the raises and money that goes to them, the general fund, as it was pointed out, would still have to subsidize some of that. I want it to be clear that that's not gonna go away and giving a gift to the administration. Because right now, as it said, they are paying either general fund to subsidize the fire department. Well, taxpayers are the ones that's paying it. We're already paying it in taxes and sales taxes and everything else. So all I'm saying is, I don't want that to go away, just because of this millage. Because I think the whole idea behind the millage is to set up a stage to allow the firemen to have a decent wage, have decent facilities, and the money that is needed for them to do their jobs and not have to take two or three other jobs, which has been proven detrimental because you cannot think as good when you're exhausted or if you're strung out, it doesn't happen. And these people are going in homes that are burning. These people are saving lives. They, you know, when they go out, it's like the police department. When they go out, they never know if they're coming back because you don't know what's gonna happen on that call. Well, same thing happens with the fire department. And that's why we should make sure they are well protected, and we're not able to allow administration down the road play games. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Matthew Hotard, resident of Kenner, also the president for the Kenner Fire Association. When I look into the audience today and see the overwhelming support from the men and women of this department, as well as their families, it reminds me of why I took this position, but also the weight that this position also puts on our shoulders as a board. This millage is something that is long overdue. Dedicated funding for this department is something that is long overdue. Whether millage is the right answer or not, that is, this is where we are. With that being said, the only assurances that we've been given in the limited amount of talks that we were privileged to have was that the only thing that's guaranteed is that if this doesn't pass, there most probably will be layoffs in the fire department. There are no assurances that if it does pass, whether it be this council or councils in the future, because this is for 10 years, could roll back this millage, which has been done in the past, which is part of the reason we're in the problem we're in now. There's no assurances that our pay structure would be made different because of things that are not at the bare minimum of the state level or the state mandate, to where at the end of the day, if this were to pass and our starting pay were to be moved forward and were to go up, we might still be in the same position at the end of the day when we're taking our checks home. So to say that it's a little scary is an understatement when we so desperately need this money as well to help fund our fire department. I do agree with him in saying that this is not a fix for our department, unfortunately, because we are so underfunded, but that this is a Band-Aid, and the most alarming thing for some of us to understand is that there is no other plan moving forward. I realize that's the future, but most of the men and women in this audience are the future, and I am the future. We raise our children to be the future of the world, and the correlation between that is that this is the future of a department for our city. And so to put a Band-Aid on something and a temporary fix, although it is much needed, the fact that there is no plan moving forward possibly is a little bit alarming. But at the same time, if this is a step in the right direction, then we would like to support it. The main thing, or one of the main things for us besides the equipment that we so desperately need, is the starting salary. That has been a talk since the start, even before this administration got in. And we have yet, we were told that there was gonna be a starting salary number given before this meeting, which would have helped tremendously. But I'm asking, is there, our department and the city, is there a starting salary number that has been agreed upon or has been talked about in moving forward? I think the citizens need to realize, should this council approve this, this millage moving forward, is that not only do the lives of the men and women who work for the department depend on it, but the people in the city as well. Because without the people in the seats of the trucks and in the station, then that severely hurts our response to help the people that are in the fires or in the predicaments that they're in. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Chorw?
Matt, please, stand up. You could have a couple of times said assurances. You know, we know nothing that's sure that this is gonna pass or not, correct? What have the association done to help promote this, to where we can possibly get this passed? What the association done to help the city, spread the word to the citizens that really, that this has to happen?
Are you asking me what we've done?
Yes, yeah. To promote it, you know, to go out there, knocking doors, signs, or anything like that.
To be fair, the first time we ever heard about the department going for a millage was the last week of May. So today is, what, August 2nd, August 3rd? So that hasn't really been a lot of time. And to be honest with you, between then and now, there have been a couple of meetings that we've been privileged to be a part of. And in that, really, this is, the way it was explained to us, is this is the first step. That you approving this is the first step of moving forward. And as far as an association, if you're looking at social media, if you're looking at the news, there are definitely things that we have done to try to shed light on the situation in general for the department. And we feel that that was to bring awareness to if you live in Kenner and you didn't know about it, or if you don't live in Kenner, you didn't know about it. So I would say that in a very short period of time, with our very limited resources, we have done quite a bit to bring knowledge to people that maybe didn't know about this at all. So, I mean, that's my take on that.
Right. Trustfully, the fire trucks stay in the station. They were not on the streets all day, like the police department. You know, so we're that unknown, that's in the back, but we're always there for the citizens when you need it, you know, when we need the fire department.
Yes, sir.
So I am that, there aren't any assurances, and I know you're trying to do what you can for it. But I'm a little saddened by some paperwork that I got today from the association. And it hurts me. This is not the time for it. When we asking the citizens to go in their pockets and asking them to promote a tax, and then we get paperwork like we did today. It hurts, okay? Really hurts because we could use that money to get the firemen.
I don't mean to cut you off. Are we talking about the millage? Are we talking about something completely different that has nothing to do with this millage right now?
I'm sorry, Matt.
I said, I didn't understand what you were saying, that to me has nothing to do with what we're speaking about right now, and I felt like this was getting off topic.
I'll talk to you later, bud.
Okay. Are there any questions from the members of the council? Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Amy Hotard, City of Kenner. I'm the wife of a fireman. I live on the other side of this job. I see how hard these men- one-third of the time that we're together, to not have that other parent at home to help you with the kids, to not have the ability to have somebody help you get the kids out of the door in the morning, and that's something that they signed up for. What they didn't sign up for is to be paid at the same starting rate for 17 years, and that's where we're at right now. So, if the millage is the answer, you're going to get the support if that is what is going to fix the problem. But the problem primarily, for everybody on this council, and for all of the citizens of Kenner, is the fact that these men and women aren't paid enough, and they aren't taken care of, are treated as though they're valuable members of the city, and of the city's functioning departments. And for them to get behind something full force, which they would 100% do, I would think that these men and women need an assurance as to a starting pay number, because that affects everything around their lives, that affects everything that surrounds them. But I do understand how the millage would be supporting them, and it could support the department in other areas, because they do have deficiencies, they do have lack of PPE, they do have issues with funding things that these men and women need to do their day-to-day job. So, as a citizen who pays taxes, I would certainly get behind it, and not alone because of my husband being a fireman, but coming from both standpoints, I do think that the firemen also need an assurance of what the starting pay number is. And, and Mr. Schwartz, you asked about what they have done. You can certainly get as much support and, that you need, right? If they're given or told, hey, this millage is going to do X, Y, and Z, this is how this is going to be set up. And I think that that's a fair question from a citizen, or from somebody at the department. But, in terms of voting, as to whether to put a millage on the ballot, you are the people in the position to know if this is the answer. I don't know the answer. But if you're telling me that this is the answer to fix this problem, to fix their problems, you need to vote yes. And then you need to give them an assurance of, support this when it comes up on the ballot, because your pay raise is going to be this. You're gonna, your starting pay is not going to be 8.93 an hour, your starting pay is going to be X. They'll come out in droves, I'll come out in droves, family members will come out in droves. These people here, who are here today to sit through hours of hearings, are here to support whatever it is that fixes the problem. We just ask that y'all give us a solution. Thank you.
Nicholas Alva, New Orleans, Kenner Fire Fighter Association Vice President. The fire millage before you is undoubtedly a crucial step in the right direction. Our city and its need to ha, needs have evolved, and we must plan for the future with foresight and determination. This millage is a lifeline and a means to ensure the immediate viability of the Kenner Fire Department. It is an investment that we should undoubtedly be making in the men and women firefighters before you. We must not lose sight of the fact that we are operating in a world that changes at a rapid pace, and the demands on our fire department will only continue to grow. As we commend the efforts of our firefighters, we also acknowledge that they deserve more than just our applause. Our firefighters are on the front lines of defense, are heroes who willingly step into danger to protect the lives and property. To attract and retain the best and brightest, we must address the concerns about starting pay and the need to increase benefits. A competitive starting pay not only acknowledges the risks they take, but also ensures that the firefight, fire department remains strong, capable, and well-staffed. We must safeguard the benefits of our firefighters we currently, that currently have. The benefits are not just perks, they're a reflection of the value we place on their service. The commitment and sacrifice they make should be met with assurances on wages and benefits. We ask not only for your support on the fire millage, but also for your commitment to foregoing, for forging a pa, path forward. We need a comprehensive plan that takes us beyond the immediate horizon, addressing the changing landscape of firefighting, emergency response, and community safety. Let's envision a Kenner Fire Department that stands as a beacon of preparedness and resilience, equipped not just for today's challenges, but for those that tomorrow may bring. I'd like to add one last thing, that we believe a starting pay number needs to be made public for these assurances, and so we can support. Thank you.
How you doing? Thomas Corriganano in Gonzalez, Louisiana, captain, 23 years with the Kenner Fire Department, Station 35. Where do you start? Maybe it's back at the Wizard of Oz. You gotta start somewhere. Put one front and other. But this millage is something that we need, it hasn't been addressed in years, and if it has been addressed, well, it hasn't been addressed properly. We're a Class 1 department. The citizens have reaped the benefits of us being Class 1, and I'm not saying in a bad way. Rescued children, saved lives. This department has come a long way, and with the money that we have, it's hard to stay at that position with the funding that we presently have. This millage here is something that you really, really gotta think hard about, especially being a citizen in Kenner, because what's gonna happen is, we're only gonna go down the drain faster and faster. So, let's put a plug in it, let's go ahead and vote for this thing, vote for the millage passing, because it's something that we really, really is needed for this, not only for the fire department, but for the citizens of Kenner. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman.
Once again, I'm proud to say that Captain Corriganano was one of my firefighters when I was at Station 38 years ago. He's a good man, he stands by his word, he's a hell of a firefighter. I appreciate everything you said there, Tommy. I'm for the millage, by the way.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, sir.
Brian Miller, City of Kenner, District 2. I'm glad to see that you, you complimented him, but I'm gonna ask you a question, and I'm asking this as a citizen. Having been a man that's worn the badge as a policeman, and worn the badge of a fireman, some of the comments you made when the president was up here, was you said that policemen are visibly on the street, we're firemen in the station. Correct statement, but you, more than anybody on that council knows, when the firemen, the tones go out, they work more and harder on a two-hour fire than some of us work in a 40-hour week. You know that.
Correct, absolutely.
They heroes for what they do. The next thing I heard you ask, or you said, um, and I'm trying to see how you, you worded this, you asked them what they've done. Being somebody that does follow social media, them men and women have posted, been out in public, been to events, cleaned up neighborhoods, and done everything they can to get the word out that they are here to serve us as citizens. So I'm gonna ask you, what have you done, Ronnie? And we friends, I'm asking it with total respect. What have you done to put the word out for these men and women to get a raise?
Brian, absolutely, you're absolutely correct, and again.
Would you finish your comments?
That was it, I mean, that, that's my comment, Mr. Brandon, is, I, I just want an answer for that. I do feel, on behalf of them, they may not, it, it may just be me, I felt like that was a disrespectful question to these men and their families. You did it, you know what it's like.
Oh, by all means, Brian, you misunderstood what I'm saying. Thank you, Council President. Brian, it's like, I know it's out there, and for one, I would tell you, every constituent that I've talked to lately, ever since this has come up, I have told them that this has to pass, this is what they're going to do, this is for the firemen, this is for rages, this is for fire trucks, this is for stations, for equipment, absolutely everything. And I have, trust me, and I've been hitting the streets lately, a whole lot, okay? But, yes, and what I'm saying by firemen in the stations, we're not out there on the streets all the time, but when that bell goes off, those men do respond, and they work hard, and I've been with them, one, I bled with them, I sweat with them, I eaten with them, I cried with them, I laughed with them, I played with them, I've done everything with them. And I'm proud of those guys, I really am. They do a heck of a job, and I will support them all the way. And I'm telling you, I'm doing my part at pushing, I have never told anybody not to support this by any means. I love these guys, they are half of the backbone to protecting this city, and I love them to death.
And I didn't have, I, I meant to say when I started this, I'm in support of your millage.
Thank you, Brian.
Mayor Blazer.
Thank you. Well, when this was, I've, I've met with Matt and Nick now probably in the last 12 months, more than I've met with the mayor, you know, in the last 20 years, face-to-face, dealing with this stuff. This isn't the best political move I could ever make, one year into a mayor's office, asking for a raise, but the first thing I did was look at the contracts and budget. Liz knows the budget up and down, shows where the, the problems are, how we got to where we at, where we missing monies. This 7.4 mill that they're working on today was first voted on in 1983, and it brought in 1.9 million dollars. That's, I think the last time the fire department was fully funded by a, a millage. You know what's happened through the years, that cost of going up and down, this, this millage was rolled back, it was up to almost four, just under 14 mills, you know, several years ago, before it was rolled back. Assessments are done every four years, that's how you keep up with the cost of inflation. When I came in, I said, we need to address some of the longstanding problems with the fire department. We've had, I think, everyone's very familiar with Councilman Wilmot's attempt to correct how we, or change how we, uh, hold, or law, large lawsuits. The fire retirement system is the largest settlement in the City of Kenner. It's been around longer than any of us have been thinking about running for office. It had 1.4 million dollars in interest alone. So, to get that out from under us, somebody had to tackle it. So that's, that's in our past. From now on, if, if our, their, the retirement system will be, will be made whole over, uh, several years of us paying what we should have done throughout the years. The fire promotional pay, how we got to where we are, or where we were, paying the promotional rate for a firefighter, a captain, operator, uh, when they were promoted, state law dictates exactly what they should get. City of Kenner has not been doing exactly what they should be, should get. It was a, uh, actual dollar amount. We corrected that in this budget, and so they, you know, we feel that we corrected all their promotional pay to where they should be today. There may be some issues with individuals, because, like, this, this pay structure is, it's a, a monster, because every, almost every firefighter or, or person in the fire system has a different pay rate. That's how bad this is, and you can go back as far as you want, and you can't find how you even came to this stuff. But I made the, the decision that the only way to start correcting some of this stuff is to up a millage, to ask for, this millage won't fully fund a fire department, but it will surely help getting them a lot closer to being fully funded, uh, or adequately funded, where we're not relying on the, the general fund as much. Because if, if we go today, you got three years before the city is not paying police and fire a lot, that you'll be laying off personnel, because the city budget is mostly personnel costs. And the only way you trim budgets, when you have nothing but high personnel costs, or cutting personnel, so, or cutting salaries or things like that. So, uh, I'm confident we'll never get to that, that situation, but this is a, a very good start. 10 mills, at the end, it's gonna be 18.20 mills if this passes. All you're doing today is voting and putting on a November ballot for the citizens of Kenner to vote whether or not they want to raise their taxes or not. Look, we're gonna have a whole campaign, and I, I know Brian, uh, uh, what have you done? I, I think Matt and Nick would, would both agree with me, where the first step was to kind of coming what's needed, and to educate y'all to say yes tonight. Then the campaign will be rolled out, 7 o'clock tonight, to Election Day, uh, because there was no reason spinning wheels, wasting a lot of people in city government's time, a lot of people in the fire association's time, if, you know, five of y'all are gonna say, absolutely, I'm not gonna vote to put a tax on, on the, uh, the November ballot. And the way it has to be written is, it has to be written as a new tax. So even though the 7.4 is already there, and it was voted on back in April of '21, it rolls off, and the 18-2 comes if it passes. If the 18-2 doesn't pass, the 7.4 remains the same. So we, we'll be funded the same next budget as we budgeted today, if, you know, assessments and, and things don't change. Uh, but all we're doing today is, uh, voting to put this millage on, so that citizens can vote for it, and yes, millages are, it's a dedicated millage, it stays in the fire service. Uh, there's issues where I know they have an hourly number that they want, we can, we can still work on that after. There's a lot more factors that the councilman, uh, briefly brought up, that's gonna change every number in the fire system, uh, uh, going forward, once we, we get into the back proba, probational pay and things like that. But this is a good start to get to where the city needs to be with the fire service. Look, if there's any chance of, of, uh, remaining a Class 1 fire department, is to pass this millage and pay the firemen, so you have 100% uh, positions filled, you have equipment that meets the standards of these fire services, because fire trucks wear out fast, fire hoses apparently wear out fast, you know, breathing apparatus wear out fast, bunker gear wears out, you know, pretty regularly, and if you don't have a process of, of replacing these things through years, which apparently, it was, if something broke, we fixed it. Uh, there was no kind of step staying in front of, in five years, you're gonna need 1 million dollars in bunker gear. You know, that's the kind of stuff that needs to be planned out. But before this hits the, before somebody, i, if y'all approve this tonight to go on a November ballot, before the November ballot, everybody in a, in the City of Kenner will know what the starting pay is gonna be, uh, for a firefighter, and anything else they want. Because, look, that's the only way you're gonna get the people to buy into this, if they know exactly what they're voting for. If I say, well, I'll fix it, you know, we'll worry about it if, if it passes, well, you're not gonna sell anybody if it passes, if they don't know exactly what they're voting for. So, and the City of Kenner government can't say, please go out and vote for this tax. City of Kenner government can go out and say, this is the facts, you know, please vote on, in November, on this, uh, millage. We can't say vote for it, because you can't do it. Firefighters, the Firefighters Association, and anybody else, they can push, vote for it all you want. The city government cannot say, please vote for this millage. So, uh, I would hope y'all vote yes to put this on the ballot, and we can, uh, work to fixing some of our, you know, public service agencies, you know, police and fire, you know, this is the first step of trying to fix fire. And that's it. Any questions for anybody?
Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'm supporting this legislation to get this on a ballot, because when you look at the millage historical data, and the budget of the fire department, and what the millage actually, uh, created, in 1983, Mayor Glazer said that that was the last time that the fire department, millage funded the fire department, and it was 1.9 million dollars. In '92, the millage went up from 10.25 to 13.27, and there was a gap of 1,303. In 2001, the gap grew to 2.6 million, and 2010, the gap grew from, uh, to 3.6 million, and right now, it's at 9 million. I mean, so we're looking at a lot of money. So I will be supporting getting this on the, uh, the ballot, and I will be voting for this millage come Election Day, because we need this to straighten out the cost, because things have gone up over the years, and rolling back millages has caused the gap to get wider and wider, uh, when you look at the expenses versus what the millage is generating. Thank you.
Councilman LaHatt.
I want to talk to Mrs. Hotard, not Matt. Could she come back up? Is she here? Is your first name Amy, is that, I can't remember?
Yes.
Okay. I just, I want to tell you, um, I didn't know much about the fire department before I got in office. I'm an attorney, my brother was a, in OPD for a number of years. Um, your husband has done a magnificent job in explaining this to me, and the budgetary concerns, and the problems that the men and women face in the fire department here in Kenner. He has thoroughly convinced me that there is a huge problem. He has thoroughly convinced me that there is a huge problem. And I told him that the, one of the big hurdles we're going to have is, I'm voting for this, obviously, is public education as to why this is a problem, why we need this millage. The wives, the spouses, when they support men and women in this type of fashion, it goes a very, very long way. And I told Matt, you need to bring your wife out, that obviously, everybody's going to open the door when they, when they see you. Maybe not Matt, but when they see you.
I appreciate that.
So, it's, you know, the, the police department, I remember with Keith, did something where there was a, like, there was a thing with the wives on TV or something at some point, it's very effective, you know. I'm going to vote for this, I represent about 10,000 people in District 3. Pretty sure that everybody in District 3 wants to keep their Class 1 fire department. I've seen the fire department show up, and put out a fire in my neighborhood in Driftwood. Matt was the first one on scene when the two Mount Carmel softball players collided, uh, four months ago. They were unconscious for 20 minutes, he was the first one there, and he ran out with a stretcher, did a fantastic job. So, I, I just want to say your husband did a great job in educating me, because I didn't know anything. And so was Jason, wherever he was sitting, and so was Terrence, Chief Morris as well. And I thank you all for the education. I'm, I'm voting for this, and obviously, we can't vote for the millage, but we can put it on the ballot. And, you know, I was at the Lincoln Memorial two weeks ago, and somehow this quote from Abraham Lincoln came up, and it really does apply here. He said, "Elections belong to the people. It's their decision. If they decide to turn their back on the fire and burn their behinds, then they will just have to sit on their blisters." I saw the fire quote with Lincoln, I thought that applied here. So, whether or not this passes, it's up to the city, the Kenner residents. They have to, they have to vote for this. So, we, we just put it on. So, I would, I would tell you to recruit, you know, the firemen, spouses, and families to get it out there, and thank you again for coming here today. It does take a lot of effort to do this.
And if I may, I would like to say thank you so much for supporting the fire department, but also, you're correct. And that's something that we are actually working on, is a wives and girlfriends of the Kenner Fire Department. I've kind of taken some steps in discussing with Matt and Nick, and getting that put together. So, that is something that we do plan on doing in the very near future. It appears that that's going to be falling in my lap. So, it's another project for me, but that's okay, and it's a project that I'm happy to do. And also, anyone that needs to be educated about the firemen and what they face, I encourage you to please talk to them. They're an open door, they will communicate with you, and they need the help. So, thank you very much.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Council President. First off, I, I, I know our audiences, we, we have a, a lot of folks in our audience today, and, and I would like to ask, if you'd be so kind, if all our firefighters would stand. So, that's, that's incredible. So, really, thank y'all for being here today, it means a lot, it really does. And, and, you know, supporting this legislation, and letting us know where y'all stand. I've been on the council now six years, and being on the council for six years, I've heard a lot about the pay during that tenure. And it's, it's just, it needs, it needs to change, it needs to improve, no question about it. I was in the state legislature for nine years. Having been up in the legislature, I was very, very, very conservative. And I want to let you know today, I'm here in support of you, and I'm here in support of this legislation on your behalf, so. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. Thank you.
When I first got on the council-
Excuse me, Ms. Dunn. I just want to ask this question. Mr. Mayor, Council, is it any way that that New Orleans airport sitting in the city of Kenner, is it any surtax or something we can do to get them help pay our fireman? Yes, the question.
I just want to say to the firefighters, I was not even aware of their pay, but like the other council members who all came, you sat, you talked with me, and now I better understand. So, definitely, I will also be supporting to put this on the ballot.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilwoman McKenna?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Of course, thank you for taking your time out. Obviously, you guys are not working, so thank you for taking your free time out, all the firefighters that are here, and their families, to come in support of this. I'm 100% in, in support of the fire, the fire department, and an increased pay. You guys have, some of you guys probably have, were first responders for when my dad passed away. The fire department has been, you know, in, responded, and to, to many instances, hopefully, luckily not in fires, but, but, you know, I think, I know the importance of having a fully functioning fire department in the city of Kenner, and how lucky we are to have a Class 1 fire department. So, you know, I'm obviously in support of this, I've been in support of the fire department ever since I've been on, on the council. I, I've spoken many times with Matt and Nick, and of course, the fire chief. You know, I think everyone is coming together in support of this. I think as, as residents of Kenner, you know, everyone is a taxpayer that lives in Kenner, and, and so, I think this is going to have an impact on all of us, but it's going to be a positive impact, because making sure our citizens and the people who serve us are fairly and, and decently paid is important. It shows us that we, as citizens, value you, and, and also that we value your service. So, thank you very much for coming, and I'm definitely going to be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I, I, I'd just like to close by saying, I commend the mayor and the administration, because since we got in office last year, this, this administration has sat down and looked at issues, not only for the fire department, throughout the city, and is working on a plan to right the ship, if you will, and for a can that's been kicked down the road for many, many years. This council, I think it's very safe to say, is in full support of public safety and the safety of our, our citizens. And that includes fire, that includes the police department. We have allocated money from our district funds for the fire department, for the police department. We believe we need to keep things moving where people are going to enjoy and continue with the quality of life they've come to know by living in Kenner. So, as my colleagues have stated, I, I, we are all in full support of this being put on the, the ballot in November, and we will do our part, and I, I trust the fire department and the families of those people will do the same, so that we can make certain the people of Kenner understand the, the importance of this, and continue the quality of life we expect. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 13B is a resolution temporarily suspending Council Rule Number 11 of the Rules of Organization, Business, Order, and Procedure of the Council of the City of Kenner, and rescheduling the Kenner City Council Agenda Deadline to Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, at noon for the council meeting of September 7th, 2023. Have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember LaHatt. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 13C is a resolution authorizing the placement for temporary signs on public property for LA Walks for Parkinson benefiting the Davis Foundation. Have a motion by Councilmember McKenna, seconded by Councilmember Brennan. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda, we have none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is summary ordinance number 13,323, and ordinance repealing ordinance number 12,227, and accepting the lowest responsive bid received from B&amp;J Enterprises of Metairie Incorporated to furnish and install roofing at the Mustfertino concession stand in accordance with letter bid 23-2055, in the amount of $22,200 for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenna. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 13,324, and ordinance repealing ordinance number 12,228, and accepting the lowest responsive bid received from NOLA Build Contracting Services Incorporated to furnish and install roofing for the fire headquarters in accordance with letter bid 23-2054, in the amount of $21,859.20 for the Department of General Services. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 13,325, and ordinance approving amendment number 1 to the agreement with Hartman Engineering Incorporated, dated January 25th, 2022, for Roosevelt Boulevard improvements, West Metairie Avenue to West Napoleon Avenue, State Project Number, H period 015120, Federal Project Number, H 015120, City of Kenner Project Number, 2021-2-RB, adjusting the amount of basic and supplementary services for the Department of Public Works. I have a motion by Councilmember Sharwood, seconded by Councilmember Wilmot. Is there any discussion on the item?
Mr. Morello?
Al Morello, 4260 East Royal Drive, 5th District, 51 years. I got a couple of questions on this item. Number one, correct me if I'm wrong, is this the item, or not, where $258,000 was donated from Jefferson Parish to cover a change order on a project back here? And if it's not, uh, just, uh, just, you know, okay, it's not. Okay. The amendment, the adjustment, this is an increase, this is a change order? Okay, I'd like to get an explanation why the increase.
It's, it's an increase because we have modified the scope of work that was originally set for that project by adding drainage improvements, sidewalking, driveway improvements, uh, waterhouse connections. We're also going to be removing the trees in the mediums, and a number of other items, and that has generated an increase in the scope of work for professional services associated with the, uh, design of the project.
Okay, thank you, Jose. Anybody got any comments, any questions? Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Seeing no further discussion, council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15D is summary ordinance number 13,326, and ordinance approving cooperative endeavor agreement with NOLA Sports Center for the use of the Lincoln Manor Playground. Mr. Chairman, I refuse the remotion to remove, a request to remove this item from the agenda, from the administration. I have a motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Branigan, to remove. Is there any discussion on the removal? Seeing none, council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15E is summary ordinance number 13,327, and ordinance ratifying the emergency replacement of the Ashbrook Belt Press Drive Roller by GSM Engineered Fabrics LLC, in the amount of $17,707 for the Department of Waste Water. Have a motion by Councilmember LaHatt, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. Seeing no discussion, council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15F is summary ordinance number 13,328, and ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of bar screen number 2 at the treatment plant by Custer's Water, in the amount of $19,414 for the Department of Waste Water. Have a motion by Councilmember Wilmot, seconded by Councilmember LaHatt. Seeing no discussion, council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15G is summary ordinance number 13,329, and ordinance ratifying the emergency repair of pump number 3 at 35th and Ole Miss Lift Station by Precision PSI LLC, in the amount of $35,773.42 for the Department of Waste Water. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Sharwood.
Councilwoman Wilmot?
If I could, could, on this, if you will, please?
Yes, sir.
We have, we have two of them noted, what is this, 15G and 15H, we have two. So, we have two pumps out at that same station?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's a four-pump station, and right now, we have two pumps and a diesel pump there, operating the station while we wait for these repairs.
So, I presume it's creating some adequacy issues, serious adequacy issues with the two pumps being out. How many pumps are there total there?
There's four pumps total, and there's eight upstream lift stations that discharge to this site. So, if we have a type of rain event, or any long-going rain event, it could cause problems. We're not having those pumps in service.
Thank you for the explanation, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, on, you see these emergency repairs and stuff, I kind of question what they are, but when it's wastewater, it's kind of imperative. When it gets cooler, I hope you accept my invitation to come look at this wastewater treatment plant, so you have a better understanding. Eddie will walk you around and, and, because when people ask you the question, when they asked me before, I went through this whole thing a while back, how it works. It's eye-opening, eye-opening to see, and how quickly this stuff fails. And they'll go, they'll tell you why it fails, how it fails, because I learned a lot about science and bugs, but, go when it's cooler. So, that's my only recommendation.
Well, Mayor, I think most of us have done it, it's eye-opening and nose-opening, I'll add, so. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15H is summary ordinance number 13,330, and order to ratifying the emergency repair of pump number 4 at 35th and Ole Miss Lift Station by Precision PSI LLC, in the amount of $29,751 for the Department of Waste Water. I have a motion by Councilmember Brennan, seconded by Councilmember Dunn. All council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 15I is summary ordinance number 13,331, and ordinance authorizing the utilization of existing state contract number 4400002524, with Howard Industries Incorporated doing business as Howard Technology Solutions, to purchase computer equipment on an as-needed basis in an amount not to exceed $50,000 annually for the Department of Information Technology. I have a motion by Councilmember Branigan, seconded by Councilmember McKenna. Seeing no discussion, all council members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Seeing none, motion passes 7-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance amending ordinance number 11,062, adopted March 17th, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, more particularly amending and rezoning lots 1 and 2, Square A, Oakland Plantation, from SI Special Industrial to R2, Two-Family Residential. Item 16B is an ordinance amending ordinance number 11,062, adopted March 17th, 2016, entitled Unified Development Code of the City of Kenner, Louisiana, more particularly amending and rezoning Lot 55, Square 48B, University City Subdivision, from RR1, Single Family Residential, to C1, Neighborhood Commercial. Item 16C is an ordinance rescinding ordinance 5710, adopted June 19th, 1986, which approved the re-subdivision of lots 14, 15, 16, 17, and the adjoining portion of the revoked 20-foot alley, Square 5, Hanson City Subdivision, into lot, into new lot 15-A, and also approved a conditional use permit for a daycare center on lots 12, 13, and 15A, to place lot 15A back into its original platted lots, and to remove the conditional use of a daycare center from lots 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, and the portion of the revoked 20-foot alley abutting lots 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. Item 16 is an ordinance approving the lease of the Gordon Avenue Right-of-Way Hanson Place Subdivision, which property is owned by the city of Kenner. 16E is an ordinance amending the operating budget for the fiscal year 2023/2024 to defund the public works director and establish funding for the mayor's executive coordinator in governmental affairs and strategic development in the general municipal department. Item 16F is an ordinance authorizing the city of Kenner and the Kenner Police Department to hold a public auction on September 21st, 2023, to sell surplus movable property no longer needed for public purpose, and setting the terms and disposition of the proceeds from the sale. Item 16G is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Ray Brothers Incorporated to furnish and install replacement cu, custom exterior wall panels at the Punch Train Convention and Civic Center, 4545 Williams Boulevard, in Kenner, Louisiana, in accordance with seal bid 23-6782, in the amount of $61,977 for the Department of General Services. Item 16H is an ordinance approving amendment number 2 to the agreement between the city of Kenner and Blue the City of Kenner and Blue Williams LLP to extend the term and increase the not-to-exceed amount by a hundred thousand dollars. Item sixteen I is an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Design Engineering Incorporated regarding Power Boulevard meeting and improvements, West Esplanade Avenue to Vintage Drive, state project number H period zero one one seven seven nine, federal aid project number H zero one one seven seven nine, Kenner Public Works number two thousand fourteen dash zero zero one B dash CIP, in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen J is an ordinance approving an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, state project number H period zero one five one two zero, federal aid project number H zero one five one two zero regarding Roosevelt Boulevard, West Napoleon to West Metairie. Item sixteen K is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Cass Brothers Incorporated by the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development in the amount of three million three hundred and ninety-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty cents for Power Boulevard median improvements, state project number H period zero one one seven seven nine, federal aid project number H zero one one seven seven nine, Kenner Public Works number two thousand fourteen dash zero zero one B dash CIP for the Department of Public Works. Item sixteen L is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Coast to Coast Custom Mobile Vending LLC for the purchase of a custom-built trailer in the amount of seven thousand four hundred and sixty dollars in accordance with letter bid number twenty-three dash twenty-eighty-three for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Item sixteen M is an ordinance approving a cooperative endeavor agreement with NOLA Sports Center for the use of the Butch Dewey Playground. Item sixteen N is an ordinance authorizing a public hearing and amendment number two to the fiscal year two thousand sixteen annual action plan of the Community Development Block Grant Program for the Community Development Department. Item seventeen is reports from the council and our special committees. Seeing none, item eight, oh, sorry, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to remind everybody that the annual AKC Land Yop Dog Show started today at the Punch Train Center. So the event is four days, uh, in length, and it started again today, Thursday, August third, and it goes through Sunday, which is August sixth. It starts at eight o'clock in the morning and it ends at five P.M. And most importantly, it's free for all spectators, so if you want to go and enjoy, um, dog competitions, it's wonderful. If you go, you'll see many different types of breeds of dogs that are well-groomed and trained. The competition is really fascinating as you watch professional dog handlers in action and the outcomes of the dogs as determined by the, by qualified judges. Lots of people come into our city from several different states for this event every year. Um, th- this event generates hundreds of thousands of dollars for our city's economy. So I hope that you and your family have the opportunity to experience this free dog show, and please try and stop by. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Dunn?
Councilwoman, please put your microphone on so we can hear you. You can he, oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'd like to say that this, um, Saturday, we have a teen summit, um, let's talk about it, at Susan Park Gym. There would be lots of free giveaways, and, uh, we'll be giving away book bags and things of that nature. Um, I'm, I'm glad that the residents of, of our area decided to come together and help put on this summit. Also, on the twelfth, we'll be putting together, uh, another event, also, uh, we'll be having a free giveaway, free food, and all of this stuff will also be going on. So we're actually putting on two events back-to-back. The second one, it's more of a entertainment, but they would be cutting hair and things of that nature also. So we would appreciate any support, if you all have kids in school or whatever. Both events are free and definitely open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You'll be able to speak, uh, you'll be able to speak in just a couple of moments when we can address the council. Thank you. Yes, sir, Mayor.
We're under reports from council and special committees. That's what we under seventeen. All right, well, I should've said this in the beginning, but it waited till, it'll have more oomph at the end, but I'd like to, everybody in the City of Kenner to let them know that each one of you council members provided, uh, funds to purchase water, power rate, Gatorade, and everything else for the city workers that are working out in this heat the last, uh, couple of weeks, so it goes, you know, you'll give the money, you'll give the, give the water and power rate, and get no accolades for it, so I'll, I'll be the one to tell you thank you from all of them. They're probably home sleeping now, cause you wore them out in the heat.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, yes, I'd like to thank the, all the council members who contributed to that, and Mark Glorioso and Masur Nats of coordinating, uh, pickup, handout, distribution of that, and everything else, so thank you. Adam Clark?
Yes, sir. Item nineteen is unfinished business and our motions to reconsider are removed from a tabled position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Please state your name and the district you live in, and you have.
Al Morello, forty-two sixty East Loyola Drive, fifth district, fifty-one years. I wanted to respond to some comments that was made in here at the last meeting, I'm gonna direct it to the entire council, because two councilmen was, made these comments, and I take that it was on behalf of the entire council, since there was no response from none of the rest of y'all. First of all, let me say this. If any of you all up there are not in a position, or you don't have it in you, to stand up for our city and our employees when our city's being put under siege, then that's on you. What you shouldn't hide behind, decorum rules as an excuse. There was no decorum rule violated at this podium at the last meeting. There was no obscenities at this podium at the last meeting. The two words coming back is defined in the English dictionary as two nouns. Two nouns combined together for a particular response. There's no rule broken there. Now, since we on this subject, I've been noticing a foul smell all around our city, and first I thought we might've been having a problem with our sewer system, but then it dawned on me about the scum that bubbled up out that sewer called New York, that floated its way down here, and then I realized the stink around our city, that's where it was coming from. Okay? Now, I wanna pose this question to the fire chief. Since you've been the fire chief, have you ever reported a surplus, returned any money back out of your budget to the general fund? That's the question I have for you in this call.
Chief, I'm gonna, Chief, I'm gonna ask you not to respond.
How much?
Let, excuse me, Mr. Morello, go ahead and finish the questions you have, your three minutes.
Right, I don't want him to respond, I agree with you, councilman. I don't, I don't wanna yield my time to nobody, I'm just posing the question.
It's not what I was gonna say, Mr. Morello, if I could finish the sentence.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, man, I beg your pardon.
Go ahead and finish any comments you have, and at three minutes, if the chief wants to respond, he'll be able to.
Gotcha.
Go ahead, please.
That's no problem, no problem at all. I wanted to pose this next question to you, Chief Conley. What is, uh, entry level, Chief Conley, for a Kenner policeman? What is the entry level? You can answer when I'm done talking. And I wanna say this, I already know what it is, but I wanna hear it from you, and I already know what he turned in, but I wanna hear it from him. That's the questions I like asking, the ones I already got to answer too. Now, the disparity in the pay between a Kenner fireman and a Kenner policeman is simply...
Mr. Morello, your three minutes are up, thank you.
To be continued, thank you.
Mr. Morello, the answer to your question is, yes, I, I have returned money back out of my operating budget, uh, it was for various reasons, some of them was positions that weren't filled in the fire service. It was for money that was allocated for certain items that we chose not to, uh, purchase at a, at a particular time. So yeah, that's, that's money that's been returned out of my budget.
How much did you?
This past year, it was, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of nine hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Brian Geiger? I hope I'm saying that correctly.
Hey, I would like to respond to Chief, Chief Conley.
Chief Conley, you didn't, uh, move to the mic, I figured, go ahead.
Well, we've been trying to stay competitive in the market as far as law enforcement in the region to get the, uh, get as many applicants as we can. We are at forty-eight thousand dollars at entry level, and we do cover the first year of, uh, state supplemental pay, um, so that's, that's where we are.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Geiger, we'll try that again. You'll have three minutes, sir.
I'm here, basically, for, uh, sixteen B, but I thought the piece of paper was simply the sign-in piece of paper, I didn't know I had to speak again. So basically, I just came to, uh, oppose the rezoning, uh, request for, uh, the Loyola Boulevard property, lot fifty-five. Um, I mean, I spoke at the last meeting a week or so ago, uh, I really just wanted to do my due diligence this week by just showing up. I thought it was just to make sure that it goes into the, the, you know, the readings of the docket or whatever, and then I would come back on November seventh to actually speak again on that part. I'm really not prepared today for this, this is kind of overwhelming. So, with that said, I just want to oppose the rezoning request for lot fifty-five B, and I'll be back to see y'all on the seventh if it comes to that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sean Geiger?
I, I stopped for my three neighbors in my brother, so it's just regarding that.
Oh, that's why it says, Mr. Geiger's neighbor that lives behind him, okay, see it does it. Jennifer Rush?
Sorry, I started, uh, I was gonna leave the party, but I'm against the lot being from a residential to a residential. I've been a four-eight permanent for like twenty-eight years, I just don't want it going from a residential to a residential.
Thank you. Roger Rush, Jr.?
This is Roger, our man.
Oh.
It's a weird sign, thinking that was, and the attention was paying. So you feel bad that Rush is a, a jerk, very bad.
Okay.
And he's my partner for, for lot fifty-five.
Mr. Chairman.
Liberati, is that you also, sir?
Mr. Chairman, if we could clarify so everybody is aware, that meeting is gonna be on September seventh, which is a Thursday, at five-thirty, so if you come back and attend, that's when it's on the agenda and everybody can have that opportunity to speak, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Geraldine Mariani? Ah. Is that the party bus out there? Okay. Mr. Oscar Cade? Please state your name and the district you live in, you have three minutes, Mr. Cade, thank you.
Okay, I'm Oscar Cade, everybody know that, I hope. But look, guys, I'm gonna go through this first, okay? Uh, I just wanna point this out, I'm still on the bridge back in Lincoln Manor, thirty-first and Duncan. You know, when you have these big trucks that crosses that bridge, that stop, it has a surge. And when it takes off, you have another surge. These trucks weigh anywhere from fifty-one thousand to eighty thousand pounds. So the question is, when was the last inspection put on that bridge for structural, you know, strength and all? Hopefully you all get a test on that. These garbage trucks stopping on that bridge is putting wear and tear on it. Chief, I seen a committee that came out and checked where we had a stop sign on the bridge, and hopefully you guys can look at that and reevaluate it for saving that bridge. That bridge was put there in twenty-oh-four, it's old, and if you don't put a structural test on it, you're gonna find out these big trucks stopping and rocking on that bridge is gonna cave in. Okay, the next question was to, uh, Chief Conley, I've been out of town, and I didn't get the final results on the fire that was at Washington Elementary. Did you get a final thing on that, sir?
Mr. Cade, do you have any other questions, please, before your three minutes are up?
Yeah, guys, well, it don't matter who answers, but just...
I'm gonna answer it when you finish.
Yeah, yeah, mention it after I finish, that's, that's number three. Okay, the next thing was, I had to ask Ms. Shaw, had Byron Lee contributed the money with Kenner to, uh, fix thirty-first street from the bridge to Tipton, I think that is, next to the school. So I know that may be on the next agenda, so you can answer, they'll be prepared for it, cause I'll come back with it. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you helped me out with this explanation about the transit from Baden Rouge through the airport and all, but I just want you to clarify something with me, whereas I don't forget it, cause I brought my pad to write it down, what is the chain of command for us getting something done in my district? Do I come to you first, or do I go to Councilman Dunn, and I'll take my seat and listen?
Thank you, Mr. Cade, uh, Mr. Goodall.
You want Jose first, or?
As far as the, uh, bridge inspections are, is concerned, the, uh, state DOTD in conjunction with the Jefferson Parish Engineering Department inspects all bridges throughout Jefferson Parish, incorporated areas and, you know, incorp, unincorporated areas on a yearly basis. We do get reports on those bridges. To my knowledge, they haven't found any structural deficiencies on the thirty or thirty-first street bridge. As far as thirty-first street resurfacing, I think we are currently looking for a funding source to resurface a section of thirty-first street, I believe from the Duncan Canal to Helena Street.
Thank you, Mr. Goodall. Councilman Schwart?
Mr. Oscar, sir, um, have you been back there in Lincoln Manor for a long time? Have you lived back there, or?
I've been in Lincoln Manor since nineteen sixty-eight.
That's a long...
Nineteen sixty-eight, I've been back there, when we had the old wooden bridge.
That's what I'm getting ready to say.
And we had stop signs, we had stop signs put there when we could go out to William Boulevard and go out, but once they send the traffic through thirty-first, thirty-second street, we don't know, we no longer had to go that way. We went out thirty-second and went around. So, that bridge, like I say, has been replaced, and I'm looking at these big trucks that's crossing. We got, um, IV ways crosses that bridge four times. When they come in on Tuesdays, and when they come in on Fridays, those trucks are stopping on the bridge, dead weight.
Mr. Cade, excuse me, your three minutes is up, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna let Councilman Schwart talk, and I, I would...
Yeah, I just, I should, because, oh, no, sir, I do, because I was at the fire station at Loyola and Veterans for fifteen years, and I remember when that was a wooden bridge, with wooden pylons down there, so it's much better now than what it was back then. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Chief Conley?
Yeah, and, and Chief Morris can correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fire, it was believed to be caused by a ballast electrical fire that started in the auditorium of the gymnasium?
Yes.
You want me to?
There was an electrical fire.
Yes, sir, welcome back.
Through the camera, chief.
Yeah, well, you know it, yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're not at the hour to get a investigation.
Mayor Gliss?
Should we ask the question? Mr. Cade, there is, the chain of command, as you can call either me or your well-dressed councilwoman, uh, for any issues you have, it's all gonna go to the person that needs to address whatever issue you had. She sends, her office sends it, uh, to my office, if there's an issue, we keep her informed of the issues we have, what complaints we get in her district, so either one of us is the proper person to, to contact.
Okay, but the question was, sir, the reason I wanted to get that clarified is that if I call you out in my house with a problem, and you say, okay, Mr. Cade, I'm gonna take care of it, and then I go back to your councilperson and I give a question, they have to check if you've been out of the business, so that's why I'm trying to get the management, you know, the chain of management.
It's, it's, yes, she controls her budget, which is not a lot of money, and we, we do most of the repairs, uh, citywide, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Thomas Caput Lian, all good, thank you. Evelyn Evans?
She's gone.
You sure about that, Mr. Geiger? You sure about that, Mister Geiger? Dr. Carl Hansen? Please state your name and the district you live in, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Carl Hansen. I am in District Five, proud to call Mister Brendan my councilman. I've been resident for forty-eight years in Kenner. I'm a family practice physician, been practicing for thirty-six years, and I own and operate a business in Kenner for twenty-three years. Uh, thanks for allowing me to address. My, my concern tonight is to, um, actually just offer any guidance I could give to the administration and the council with regards to, um, saving money. I know recently, uh, the city signed a contract with, with an insurance company and was found to have a fifteen percent increase in premiums. Um, I, I would contend that a, a healthcare plan could have been developed for actually about a twenty percent less premium than, than what we're currently paying. Um, now, in no way is this blaming anybody, administration, or H R, anything like that. It's just that I have knowledge of how these health plans work. And I feel that a lot of the talk about the fiduciary actions can, with regards to pay raises, et cetera, could be answered by saving money from the healthcare side, and, uh, that's, that's my bailiwick. So, again, I'm not blaming anybody for anything that's done. I understand how it goes with negotiating with individuals and with municipalities and employers with comes to healthcare. Um, and, and simply having a broker negotiate with one, with Blue Cross, and then with United and Cigna and Aetna is not the way to do it. And even though I am not gonna be involved specifically, I would offer my assistance. Um, fortunately, I, I had the opportunity and, uh, Miss Newton was kind enough for me to bend her ear at a resident KBA meeting, and, uh, and I had emailed the administration. Uh, so, I, I'm doing this as a concerned citizen, as a, as a disclosure, I have no conflicts of interest with any healthcare advisor, with any broker, with any, as a matter of fact, I do not accept a nickel from any insurance industry or government agency, nor does my family pay a nickel to any, uh, commercial insurance industry. Um, so, I would just like to, and also for the state attorney, I'm very familiar with the Consolidated Appropriations Act of two thousand twenty-one, um, and I have filed an F O I for, for our current contract. So, I, I think there's a better way that, that I want everybody to know that a lot of money can be saved in providing healthcare for the employees, and then that money saved, however you wanna budget it, could, 'cause I know healthcare dollars comes out of the big pool of employee compensation. So, what, what you pay in benefits often can't be given in raises. So, I would like to, I, I know people, if you will, who are more learned than I am, and I just offer my assistance, that if any members of the administration or council wanna dig down into different specific ways that we can save money, then I would be glad to help, and definitely refer you to individuals who know even more than I do as far as working with employers and municipalities. That is all.
Thank you, Doc. That's three minutes. Thank you. Greg Taft? Mister Taft?
Greg Taft, Fifth District. Um, I just got a couple things. One of the things I wanted to bring up is, I, it's, it's gonna be on the agenda in the next, next meeting, but it's confusing to me why we would be getting rid of a public works director and creating another position when, as a resident of Kenner, that public re-, you know, that public works director has their plate full. It's probably one of the few, uh, directors that's on the administration that probably has a very full plate. There is no room for movement. They, they're hus-, that person has to hustle and keep up with a lot, a lot of stuff. So, I don't know how we can defund it and move that to somebody else that's in a created department. So, I just wanted to bring that out. The other thing I wanna bring out, uh, in the last, uh, I'm gonna say three weeks, maybe, I have not been able to respond to comments issued by the city, when the city puts out a, uh, thing on Facebook. And to me, I, if, you know, if Facebook is the page that, the city's page, to me, a citizen should be able to, um, be able to respond or give an opinion, or, you know, say what they need to say. But it's, but on it, it basically says something to the effect, uh, comments are restricted or are given to a few people, and I felt bad that I wasn't one of the few people, be- I guess y'all don't like my opinion. I don't know. But anyway, I just think that that's, that was not a good thing, because a lot of people look at that and say, "Well, this is the page for the city, and I can't even give a response." Then apparently, they don't want my opinion. Now, I know y'all don't like my opinion, but that, but still, it's an opinion. Anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Taft.
I'd like to respond just a little bit.
Yes, sir. Mayor?
As usual, absolutely one-hundred percent incorrect information. The first violation of free speech is if you limit somebody's speech because you don't agree with them, right? You don't agree with them, they're yelling at, all that kinda stuff. No one was singled out. It, it's not a public forum. It's a page where we push information out. So, what we've done is follow the Facebook. Natalie can explain it better. Facebook has its guidelines of what's acceptable in their community guidelines, cursing, this, that, and the other. The comments are on. No one can be singled out because of their views. You can't just say, "Well, I'm not listening to him, he can post, he can post, she can't post." Absolutely incorrect. Was never done and will never be done in the city of Kenner as long as I'm sitting in this seat. Natalie can explain exactly what filter Facebook put on it.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'd just like to start by saying, um, we were reached out, Facebook is not the only way to communicate with us. It's actually not the preferred way to communicate with us, but I acknowledge that is how some people like to communicate. Um, the comments were turned off, um, after receiving numerous vulgarity explicit images on our Facebook page, and the people who chose to contact us via phone and email, we received several complaints from people who actually live here. Most of the people who are, and I say "people" very loosely, who are putting those comments on Facebook are not people. It's bot accounts. Um, but we've turned the comments back on, as the mayor mentioned. Facebook allows you to implement their own filters for community standards. We never, 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 never delete a comment from Facebook. It is a public record. We do hide them. Um, and so, we had started the process of going back and auditing some of those comments, because as the mayor mentioned, it's a public page, not a forum, but there, there could be kids on there. Those images do not wanna be seen by a majority of our residents. Um, and so, we've implemented some filters. I have communicated with the council when we've turned off the comments, when we turned on the comments. They are back on. Um, it won't catch everything, but it'll catch some things. But I would encourage anybody who wants to know and get the information directly from the source to not go to Facebook. Please pick up the phone or send an email and ask us. We are happy to address anything with anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. ...
And to get it on the record, as Mister Morella always loves to say, I invite anyone to come to a council meeting, and we can discuss it at a council meeting. Everyone can hear it, the council hears it, the citizens hear it. Look, I welcome anyone that wants to come. You can say how bad of a job we doing with, with anything, how good of a job we doing. Do your own research, show up, but I welcome anyone to come to these council meetings, express your opinion on anything to do with city of Kenner government or the city of Kenner itself. This is the forum where we can have a, a dialogue where if I don't know it, somebody in this administration knows it, or one of these council members know the history of some of these things. Uh, but that's kind of my open invitation, I've said it before. You know, show up at a council meeting, you state your name, where you live, and we can discuss for three minutes, and after, you know, we'll stay as long as you want to discuss something. But this is the proper forum to, to discuss the issues in the city of Kenner.
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan Nugent? Mister Nugent?
Thank you, Councilman. My name is Ryan Nugent, uh, fifty-four, forty-four Erlanger in District Three. Um, I had a few things I wanted to comment on tonight. The first, um, I just wanted to reiterate my support for the millage increase. Um, these guys do incredible work for us every single day, and they deserve it. Um, I also wanted to say that I do think providing a starting pay number is a very reasonable request, and I hope that, that, I hope that that request can be honored at some point. Number two, uh, many of you have heard me speak on the subject of lighting many times before. Um, I noticed that the lights in this room were changed out recently, and I can't pass up the opportunity to use it as an illustration. Um, so, in a couple weeks, I'll have a little science lesson explaining why everything and everyone in this room suddenly looks so much worse. Um, number three, and this is actually the main reason I'm up here tonight, is, um, I noticed that on the summary, um, ordinances and summary, uh, that we have two, uh, ordinances coming up at the next meeting concerning the Power Boulevard Medium Improvement Project, and I know that, uh, per state bid law, some of those details concerning the specifics of those projects were not able to be made publicly available until that process has been completed, and so, I guess this, this question may be best addressed to, to Councilman Lahatt, um, but at the point that these resolutions are passed, would that kind of information be then more publicly available?
It would be. Um, if, if I'm wrong, Jose can explain that, but there was, we had a big discussion, you requested, that was about eight months ago. I'm sorry.
About eight months ago, you requested that information? There was something with the bid that we couldn't provide?
Yes, sir.
Because it was gonna, it was a competitive-type situation on the bid law, right?
The Power Boulevard Project Improve, Medium Improvement Project is a state federally project, therefore, that project was bid by the D O T D. Okay, and they're very restrictive about the information that can be released and who to release it for. Uh, at the next council meeting, we, the city council is gonna approve an agreement with the apparent law bidder, which is Cass Brothers. Okay? Uh, once the city council approves that law bid, okay, we're gonna be able to enter into an agreement with Cass Brothers. At that point in time, anyone that wants to file for a public records request concerning the contents of the agreement, or wanna obtain a set of plans, you know, we would be glad to permit, you know, for that information to be obtained with the proper public records request. The other item that is on the agenda is to approve an agreement with, uh, a consulting firm for construction, engineering, and testing services. That information is also, once approved by the council and we enter into an agreement, can be subject to a public records request, and we can release that information.
Thank you.
So, yes.
Thank you, Mister Nugent. Was there a gentleman that had come up?
Yes, sir.
Please state your name and the district you live in. You have three minutes, sir.
Darrell Price, five-three-nine Salvador Road, District One. Uh, you talked about, uh, Lincoln Manor, the gym being up to be used by NOLA Sports?
No, it wasn't...
Yeah, yeah, I know it was removed, but how did that come up? Why did that come up? Even the gyms were just opened up, and my concern is because John Curtis is using Buddy Lawson. The gym just opened up. We can't even go in it, in our living district, but they can. They practicing it. Now, there's a gym in, uh, Lefont, nobody uses. Why they don't practice there? I'm just, I'm just curious, because we have gyms in our area where we can't use them, but other people can. I have volunteered to paint the parking lot. Betsy Beahan, Morgan Gym, paint the gym, then sign waivers, willing to do what it takes to get it back up to park, that it can be used by our kids. Turned down. No answers. Recreation Department, uh, the guy over there won't call me back. And, and that's what I don't understand. How can it be available for other people, but not for the people who's in the district?
Both, both gyms you're, you're, um, named are open, there's free play. We can't field a basketball team of kids because no one shows up to register for a basketball team.
Mayor, but we need time to get in the gym, to get the kids there. I got people here right now willing...
This had noth-, that, that was removed, had nothing to do with the kids not using the gym at all. At all.
My thing is, the gym's been closed for about three or four years.
I agree.
How do you get kids back without opening it up, putting a plan in place to get them back there? But if we're not giving the time, or giving the opportunity, but then NOLA Sports come in with the same ideas we have, believe that, and, and you wanna approve them to do it in Lincoln Manor?
And it had nothing to do with limiting or keeping the residents out of the gyms.
Well, what is it? What we got tonight? Talk, tell me. Help us understand.
It was, it was removed.
But why was it there?
Because the tennis courts, we're gonna start a Lincoln Manor tennis program.
Okay.
Okay?
That's outside.
That's outside. The majority of, the exclusive right to this NOLA was to rebuild the tennis courts and them use it, and use an office upstairs and redo the bathrooms. That's pretty much it.
Okay, but you have a, you have a group in there right now that's willing, that, that's in there taking care of the concession stand? They're dealing with young kids, they're trying to put after-school care in there, they're trying to put a feeding program in there, the same thing we trying to do at Buddy Lawson. Let us help our children. Other communities are. You not going to Greenlong and telling them what you gonna do? You ain't going to Wentwood.
Excuse me, Mister Price?
I'm just saying.
Sir, your three minutes is up.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, it, it gets to me because we are being gutted out.
Mister Price? You can discuss it with the mayor or Mister Lane.
Yes, we can discuss it after, and explain that these parks have been shut down, like you said, for years. Companies wanna come in and utilize, put money into it. We started, but, we're starting a, a whole recreation parks, uh, advisory committee that's gonna have a whole lot of people with ideas like you to give us ideas.
So, you're gonna, so you're just about talking about privatizing this stuff here?
Absolutely not. See?
That's what it looks like?
No, that's not what it looks like. We opening the parks, making the parks and gymnasium better for the residents of Kenner. That's it.
So, you're, so you're opening up, uh, for dialogue for the people in this community to come to the...
Mister Price?
Absolutely not.
Mister Price?
The issue...
Mister Price, excuse me, Mayor. If you'd like to speak to the mayor after the meeting, please do so. Your time is up, sir.
Okay, could y'all just say...
Senator, did you have anything you wish to discuss? Senator Kirk Talbot, thank you.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, members of the council. Um, just wanted to, uh, point out real quick, we had a very successful legislative session. Um, like, uh, I worked with Chief Conley, we were able to secure half a million dollars for, for body cameras this year, and I know Representative Vilio, I think she secured two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the parks and the recreation department, so we're, we're proud of that and, and, you know, happy to work with y'all, and I do wanna give a shout-out to the, to Chief Morrison in the men and women of the fire department to, to maintain a one rating and be underfunded is, is amazing. And, and keep in mind, if we lose that one rating and it goes down, all of our homeowners' insurance rates will absolutely go up. So, whatever I can do to help y'all with the millage, I support it, uh, I'll be glad to, uh, to do whatever I can, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to, happy to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for all you...
Okay, thank you.
Chief Conley?
Yeah, I do wanna thank the Senator, uh, working with the delegation. As you know, we brought, did bring in some transparency through the body worn cameras. Funding has always been a, uh, an impediment to, to doing that, but with the help of our delegation, we were able to outfit all our officers with the body worn cameras as, as well as the flock cameras...
Right.
That are throughout the city that, um, you know, is a new, new tech, technology and license plate recognition, uh, camera, so I do wanna thank the Senator and the delegation for working together with us to make Kenner safer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Senator, thank you, chief. Councilman Wilmot?
I just want to add one thing. Senator Talbot, I just wanted to thank you and our entire legislative delegation. This has been an extremely good year for the city of Kenner, for all our folks that are up there fighting, fighting and bringing home some much-needed funds to help our city. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Councilman. See no other persons wishing to address the council? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I have, what I would like to say is this, I'm at the gym, Susan Park Gym, and what I would like to know is when are they going to fix that front section that's still bent like it's going to fall when you come in there? And another thing is, we don't have any tables whatsoever, and I was told that we weren't going to have any tables and any chairs in there. And when I have a meeting for my organization, I have to bring whatever tables that I'm going to use and my chairs. Okay? So, that is a big problem with the gym that we have, that we have over there. And my other thing is about the neighborhood, as far as cleanliness, Veteran Heights subdivision and Susan Park subdivision is absolutely terrible. The cleanup, the trash, and everything. We, I have been here and I have talked. We need some serious help on putting that neighborhood back together again. The grass cut in and everything else. And one thing I have to say, and no harm or disrespect, Kenner cuts the grass on the sidewalk to the street, right? Am I right so far? Nobody's answering? Okay, I'm going to give you an example. The grass from the sidewalk to the street belongs to the city of Kenner, correct? The other part belongs to the residents, correct? Did you ever think that if City of Kenner would cut the front, maybe we can get the residents to cut the back, and we won't see all of that trash up there? Because the front does belong to the City of Kenner, we trying to get it cut. So, if the City of Kenner would cut the front part, they don't have no, nothing else to do but to cut the back. Maybe we can get it cleaned that way. And we got the workers that ride down the street, looking at, looking at what needs to be done, and they just pass it like, right by like it doesn't exist. How can we get any help? Can I get anybody to come and just take a ride in the neighborhood and see for yourself and see what we doing? And the cars are ridiculous, eighteen-wheelers up and down the street. We have tried and we have asked. And I'm asking again, who can I get in here that can come and just take a ride in our neighborhood and see what we are dealing with? Cars all on, all in the front of the houses, trucks in front of the houses, eighteen-wheels coming down, tearing up street, pulling wires down. We need some serious help. Can we get anybody in here that can help me with anything?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Okay? Yes, thank you.
And Ms. Anna, I talked to you about it the other day, so we will be meeting. I know your office called and asked if I would be at your meeting on, on Tuesday, but unfortunately, the Cynthia Shin's office asked me first when I go to the meeting because of the coyotes with back of the track and some of the other areas. So, she asked me first if I would be at that meeting on Tuesday, so that's why I really cannot be at your meeting to address those issues. And these are the same issues that you have been asking since I've been in the seat. I did speak with Cole about it. Matter of fact, she and I had a meeting, not a meeting, but I asked her about it even before this meeting. Again, we, we know what the issues are, and, and we also know that there is an issue with garbage collection, we're doing our part, and I just feel that the administration, from what I understand, they're going to handle that. I, you know, I, I think I have less patience with it even than you do, because they would tell you, we send tickets every day on this stuff. We take pictures, we do whatever it takes. So, we are not ignoring you all. I was in that area the other day, and I, I know what you're talking about. So, this administration will address that. We can assure you that.
And I just wanted to say, you know, I know it's different ones that can come and help us. We need to know who does what. Who give tickets for parking on the sidewalk, blocking you can't get in? The other ones, front doors or what? We need some, you know, we need everybody. Matter of fact, every person that's sitting back here for a different area, that's how much trouble that we have. We keep bringing it, but we don't get an answer. It's nothing showing. I can't get anybody to even ride and look at it.
Ma'am?
And it makes us feel...
Ma'am, your time is up. Ms. Fallock will discuss things with you and give you her contact information. She's very capable, she's very committed and dedicated. She, she will help you.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. I have a motion by Councilman Wilmot and seconded by Councilwoman McKinney to adjourn.